We are back in, we are back out of the executive session. If someone could motion Mr. Vassella, you can put your mic on, sir.
It's getting there. Move the New York Board of Education for Pam S. Maraca as interim superintendent of Schools effective August 23rd, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 and authorize the chairman to enter into a contract with Mrs. Maraca.
Seconded by Mrs. Guyan.
I will start discussion. As I said before we moved into executive session, it's my opinion that Mrs. Maraca has performed exemplary in her role as the acting superintendent. She is aware of everything going on in the district, has been a huge help and has made this transition period incredibly seamless. I'm very grateful for her hard work, taking my phone calls and texting me at 7:00, 8:00 PM or at 7:00 in the morning and it's been very helpful and it's a relationship that I am anxious to continue as I think it's in the best interest of the district. Any other comments on Mrs. Maraca remaining in the role? Mrs. Guyan?
Probably won't be as eloquent as yours, but I am grateful that you are still here and willing to take on this role because it is a big job and there's so many things going on currently. So having you here has been, I think, really good for all of us because you are already in the business. I appreciate everything that you've done so far and think that you will do a fantastic job going forward.
Mr. Vassella?
Again, I echo the comments and I am very grateful for your dedication to the district for all the years that you've been here and now stepping into another role which is right in the line of fire and I am very grateful that you're here. Thank you.
Mrs. Stam?
I just think you're brave to do this. And I so appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Bremer?
Pam, nobody knows more about the board bed and this building than you, so we're in good hands. We're all so very confident. Thank you for your training.
Mr. Chufel?
Pam, thank you very much for stepping up and I wish you the best of luck.
I do just want to add on to what Mrs. Stam said. We laughed a little bit so we knew where she was going, but it's great because it's Mrs. Maraca's last year retiring at the end of the school year, so not a way that she ever expected to end her tenure, but we're very grateful that she has stepped up. I do want to discuss the terms of the contract that Mrs. Maraca sought to have in place and forwarded on to me that I shared with the board. This is something that we'll just send to the board council so that they can make sure that everything looks good before we enter, before we sign it. With the basic terms, and then it'll be a public document we'll sign, the basic terms are that Mrs. Maraca will be paid an additional sum of $12,000 on top of her current salary, which equals out to about $1,000 a month for her additional duties. She'll have her normal benefits as she normally would have as the deputy superintendent. She's asked for, and we've agreed, that she will receive a $1,200 reimbursement or stipend for use of her personal vehicle, $100 a month. She'll be able to accrue vacation days up to a maximum of 25 from last year and this year to be paid out of time of her retirement. She'll be able to take her five personal days as anyone will be able to. And that in the event her services are not required as the interim superintendent through June 30th of 2019, she'll revert back to her role as deputy superintendent at her salary that she was making at that time. So in my opinion, based on the role and everything, it's an evidently reasonable request. When we discussed as a board, no one had any issues with any of that and we are just happy to move forward in this fashion. Does anyone have any comments on the terms of the agreement before we move on? Okay, very good. We have a motion that was made and sent in. Our discussion has ended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Maraca, we are now the interim superintendent.
I'd just like to thank the board for having faith in me. I'm honored to serve in my 45th year in education.
Silly girl.
I look forward to a really productive year with all of you and I know I can get your support because I've seen it at the table and thank you very much for your faith in me.
We will now move on to a light topic. We have a discussion item for the temporary location of the transportation department. If anyone is unaware, we are tasked with the, tasked with moving our transportation department out of Garfield Street in order to aid the town hall renovation project after we had agreed to a plan of sharing space on Garfield Street for staging with the construction. With the council, the public safety officials were looking at the safety plan for the renovation and felt that it was not a location to have large vehicles moving in and out at the same time construction vehicles were moving in and out, which led to the last month or so of scrambling in terms of figuring out where we could move our vehicles to, so that the project could move forward as scheduled. The first thing that we looked at was whether or not school properties could hold our transportation fleet or at least the additional vehicles that are currently here on Garfield Street. The only way that that would have been possible, as I wrote in the letter to the council updating them on the situation in the middle of July, was through taking up the entire student parking lot at the front of Newton High School and for the soccer fields. I did not hear anyone either from the board or the council say that that was a good idea nor did the high school administration like that possibility. It's just not feasible to be far too disruptive not only to the operation of the school but to the surrounding neighborhood. So we were tasked with finding alternate locations. So I thought it's an appropriate way to start to have Mr. Jacobowitz go over what are some of the foundational criteria for what we need to move our transportation department?
In the package you have, we have a beige cover sheet which is really all the key questions and all the things that we need to just think about first before we talk about specifics. Inherently every site that we would ever look at have pluses and minuses and compromises and things like that, but there are certain elements that really transcend all of that and need to be in place at whatever site we.
The mic closer, thanks.
At whatever site is selected.
Good, yes.
So before we get off on any one particular area or one particular issue, I wanted to go through this, so the board would have an appreciation of the issues we have to look at and why we have to look at it in this fashion. Everyone is aware that there are both the short term and long term issue that's here. Shorter term is just for the duration of the town hall project. Long term is a permanent location for the school district. Both are open for discussion right now because of what's transpiring here. The board property on Garfield Street where the buses are currently is just in dirt condition will be turned. If everything goes as we expect, it will become the lay down space for the town hall project and what happens afterwards, there have been no commitments or assurances in any way the board is hard returning to that space. These are decisions that rest of the board to how to address that. So looking at scope of what we're charged with right now, district or the short term part of the discussion. So we are not looking to build anything, put up permanent structures of our own neighborhood at this point. We're looking to find the best possible match for the needs of the operation, which can be accessed quickly from being able to get started, has the inherent safety and resource capabilities that we need to run the operation and has the adequate size for being able to park and navigate up to 140 vehicles at the site. Right now, we basically have 90 vehicles under the management of transportation department. Seventy of those are buses, mini buses and vans strictly for student transportation. And then there's another 20 vehicles which are used for maintenance, IT, security, mail run, the others collateral supporting functions. In our illustration that's here, you'll see in the middle of the first page, we're looking for capacity of up to 120. That would be the 70 transportation vehicles for student transportation purposes as well as 50 employee cars at the site. Because right now we have 41 runs that go every day, five other employees who are routinely on site, plus a number of visitors and substitute drivers who are coming and going for other purposes and other requirements. So a staff capacity of 50 is necessary to do what we currently do. Okay, any questions on that?
Mr. Sylvia?
You said we had 70 vehicles?
Correct. 70 transportation vehicles, 90 in total.
Right. So the 120 includes those 70?
The 70 student transportation vehicles and the 50 employee.
Okay, thank you.
And the other 20 will be scattered around the district as we have space. Okay. So if we look at the questions that are here, these become really universal analysis items for whatever parcel of land we look at and whatever conditions it's in. So the first thing is what it will take to get it. Is this something that a potential less order to the board would be willing to go on a short term rental or if they're only interested in a five year lease or they're only interested in selling it to us? These all matter as far as the latitude we have and what we can put together for deals. So that's understanding number one as far as the property we're looking at. The second one is acreage as far as how big is the site? Right now, our property here on Garfield Street is 2.3 acres of land off the street on both sides with Garfield Street splitting the whole area. So that in essence is circulation space for bus operations and that's another three quarters of acre. So anytime you come down there, you can see buses navigating through the street for their cane turns and getting around and staging, parking and everything else that's here. So in essence, we have a three acre parcel of which we only have 2.3 acres of land, but we have three acres of usable space. So because of the setup of this as being basically a long and narrow area, this is just about the most efficient configuration we can come up with. You don't have to have the multiple loops in a square or notch shaped parcel where your circulation space expands dramatically because of the contour and the restrictions of land. Here it's basically a very nice shoebox type of arrangement where we can maximize space on both sides of the street. In addition, what's helpful here is if we ever get in an overflow situation, there are other town lots available. We have a lot by the library, we have PD lot on the side of the building plus a lot on the library side. So if we ever get jammed up on a day, there is always that little bit extra space that's available. So you could say maybe you have another quarter acre of resources that are readily available if you need it, but you really don't have to pay for it. So when you look at our site, it's really the close to optimal, I would say. Obviously, approximating town hall helps at one level, but it also hurts at another where we have such a congested site and trying to leave some of that congestion becomes a major consideration or any discussions. All right. Next part is if there's any restrictions on the land use in other places. A parcel may have five acres of total space, but only three acres is usable because of easements or other restrictions on the property that are just inherent in whatever we'd be looking at. We wouldn't be controlling those, but we have to recognize it. The land may be big enough, we may not be able to do what we want with it. Third major consideration on the systems of building on the property that has the ability to provide bathrooms, utilities and water. Now as a 50 employee permanent working area, we have the obligation as a employer to provide running water for people to be able to transfer water. You need functional bathrooms at some level. You need to be able to provide hot water, at least warm water for employee to wash his hands after using facilities. You can't just put a quarter hide out there in a remote location and say that's just fine, but it just doesn't work. So if a facility has a building associated with it that can be used for that purpose, that's great, but if that's not available, basically every other facility you're going to be looking at or parcel of land that you're looking at is going to have a similar price tag irrespective of which one it is, just to provide those features of a working office framework, functional bathrooms and functional water service. And then you start doing the add ons when you start looking at security, fencing, running power to certain locations, all the other things that are just unique to that particular site. So that price tag won't be cheap if there's no building resource on that site. Okay. All right. As I said earlier, I started with the vehicle panel. We have 70 student transportation vehicles and 50 employee cars is our working assumption. Certainly, we're close on that number. We have working space and we still will be retaining the garage at Garfield Street to store a few vehicles in, but if we can get anywhere close to being able to handle 70 vehicles of their student transportation, bus sized vehicles, that's really the key trigger indicator of suitability of the site. And if we had every last vehicle, we'd have 140 vehicles at that location. When we look at the site itself, some of the major things that are important are the, as I said, the rectangle box versus pie shape versus a bell shape or whatever the parcel of land have that happens to be used in this area. That we take on a case by case basis and assess what we can do with something based on what's available. If there's any environmental considerations and if we have certain restrictions, particularly things like the facility does not have a stormwater climate, you can't do any maintenance at that site, you can't wash buses in that site. Depending on what an owner has for the property and what they're willing to do, we can't assume that we're going to be able to do maintenance at a site or be able to do any sort of bus washing at that location. That all has to be evaluated site by site. The access road to the site is another important consideration. There's one way in, one way out. There's inherent risk without bad weather conditions, tree falls, other traffic problems, accidents where you're fully dependent on just being able to get to the site in one place and something goes wrong, you don't have an option. You're stuck compared to having, here we have two ways out. We can go to a mainstream or if you go back to neighborhoods, you actually have three ways out of this area that's here. So these are, it would never be as far as we have zero ways out there. So that's a very important consideration. And then the access and egress, I mean how convenient it is, how well the sightlines are, if you have dangerous turns which have great blind spots, things like that, buses doesn't navigate as quickly as a nice little sports group and you have to recognize that if you have a bus pulling out behind the blind corner and somebody pulls around the blind corner, it's like they're at risk to draw a sight of us. So those have to be looked at. And then the access and egress from the other local roads. So one of the illustrations that we were looking at in town here is over by Newt Junction where you have the bridge that goes over the railroad tracks and that's at the intersection of Francis Avenue. So we were looking at a property down in the Bay Street area that's down in much lower elevation. So the bus had to try to navigate up the hill on Francis Avenue and be in the line of buses at 7:00 in the morning with full speed traffic. It'd be extremely difficult to do a left hand turn because of trying to power up that hill across the traffic that's going 40, 45 miles an hour. We could do a right hand turn, but you won't be able realistically to effectively do a left hand turn on that. What will that develop, how roundings are done and pathway a bus has to take to do that. So with that, protecting and plumbing stops should be down there. So all that factors into that. And I did mention the stormwater management. Operational resources from a safety and security standpoint is the exterior lighting on the site. We will be having employees coming and going as early as 5:00 in the morning and coming back this evening at midnight. And in the winter season, half the day of running potentially be around is darkness and if it's a uncomfortable site with a lot of potholes and damaged pavement and ability for somebody to be experienced, still involved, there's workman's compries that goes with that. Elimination is the number one resource to help against that, but it's also the general condition of the site and how much money has to be put in to create a site that has reasonable safety for our employees. Then you get into the other elements of safety. Do you need security cameras at the location because of the usual, you know, eventual activity that's there? Do we prefer to fence the whole lot so that if somebody has malicious intent, that it's so much tougher chore to get access to a bus? Because you can't lock the doors on a bus. It's just you can force open the accordion at that door and just walk onto the bus if you want. So unless the whole site is cordoned off, we really don't have those assurances that somebody may just be curious and exploring or be interested in doing something else to a bus. And then certainly if a site is in an area where there's more significant concerns about the safety of the vehicles, the safety of our employees, it's a matter of hiring a security service to monitor that site at times where people aren't around or during evening hours or early morning hours where only a few employees will be showing up for It adds to the security risk for the vehicles and property and vandalism would certainly be a concern, either direct where somebody walks up to a bus or a human or somebody that has the ability to do something from a distance, so a pellet gun or something like that, that's used for target practice in remote location. We have to be mindful of these things as we look at different opportunities and assess the different sites. And then the general number of traffic and particles in different site locations. Is it prone to being visited very regularly by police and fire because the pole box has been activated for a false alarm? There's neighbor call for some kind of suspicious activity or other things going on and all that is part of the mix. And then as I mentioned earlier, the site conditions to work this time. Now we have to recognize that we have a number of our bus drivers who are in their second generation careers, so they finished up working 30 years of location and they're doing this as a second job. And if we have inherently risky site because it's very easy to trip and fall and somebody breaks wrists or gets concussion and fall down, things like this, we have very short supply of bus drivers and if we are willing to accept a higher degree of risk as far as the site conditions, which should provoke employee injuries, we're messing with our stability where it comes to making sure we can't have our drivers on the job every day. And it may not sound like a big deal, but when you get to wear time and you have a lot of icy conditions and no matter how good we have kept it here, we always have a couple every winter where somebody slips and falls and has workman's comp. And we're out there manning the site every day in conjunction with the highway department for this. At another location, we may not have that level of support to be able to do that kind of grooming daily or as necessary to make sure the walking paths to the parking lot, the walking path for the bus to wherever the office is are all at the standard we'd be comfortable with. So we have to assess that on what risk are we willing to take there. Okay. Just a couple more items in the back. Sorry, I didn't mention about the walking paths throughout the site and then other support needs is snow removal and winter. Here at Garfield Street, we're taken care of by the combination of town highway department for the big plows taking care of the big work. Then the parks and recs comes in with the snow plows on pickup trucks and then we do finished work with the snow blowers at the area and then all the ice melt work afterwards. When we go to another site, here we do not have any gates or fencing to record it off the lots, so we can push the snow off to the edges. If it's necessary for us to be able to or to desire to put the buses in a fenced enclosure, when we have to get the snow out, you need a bucket truck and a payloader to fill up the truck and pull it off, but you can't push it into the fences because there's no room for it. Or you have to leave enough room in the design of your parking to be able to anticipate that you have to have the snow banks on the side which kind of your parking areas that are usable for general parking purposes. Same thing with the walkways are depending on how far a employee has to walk from where the buses are parked wherever his personal vehicle is parked. Could be treacherous. It melts a little bit in the daytime and then at nighttime it re-freezes. There's no assurances that we'll have all those things groomed and ice melted to where there are no risk hazards to our employees that have to be considered. And certainly in conjunction with lighting or lack of lighting, that becomes a much more severe concern for us. And then in the nicer weather like now, if we're responsible for any other site maintenance and line mowing or other trimming, other things for keep up the site because of the terms of the arrangement we have with property. Back into the operations cost, one of the other things is the embedded cost of operations based on the decisions that are made in a property that is in one of corners of the community or other reason to centralize. You can have a lot more driving around time getting to the fill up station at the highway garage and then back or where the buses, garage where house every night, where everyone starts, plus the time you're paying people on the plot for driving out and driving back to these locations. It may end up being a couple hours a week per driver, but then it's all year we have that same thing. So there could be significant additional costs that can't be avoided just by the garage's place. And then certainly the supporting costs, right now we're just probably have our Garfield Street High School to set up arrangement here. If we have a, where you can put all, everybody in one place other than the maintenance activities would obviously be ideal for managing and dealing with the day to day interactions and management staff. But if we're in a spot where we have to continue two locations or even a third location because we can't get an adequate amount of operation in one location, we have to be able to manage and support it. And we have to, and those decisions will, or even assessments can't be made until we have proposals in terms of us to be able to evaluate and analyze. So these are really like the transcending questions before we look at any more property or any more opportunity that's here. Do you have any questions about this part before we move on? Perfect, with clear? Excellent. Okay. So continuing on to the package we have, you have a couple items that are here as far as just what are the requirements we have, the bathrooms, hot water, running water, that location that we've worked on. These are not discretionary on our part, these are what we happen to achieve. Really, we need to have everybody understand these are the requirements that we're obligated to work on here. This is not a construction site, this is a semi-permanent arrangement where we're having the same employees but the same place every day for two to three years. It's not qualified to just be considered a construction site where you have much more relaxed standards where the contractor is here this afternoon, he won't be back for six days and six days and some other contractor shows up doing another trade discipline. So we have to recognize as what we're obligated to. So if a site we're looking at does not have any of those embedded resources with building, you might have bathrooms in there or give building to house an office, we've got a basically contract for portable trailers that have these resources and they are not inexpensive to do that.
Where did people, where were the bathrooms when the site was here on site? Were there bathrooms in the garage?
Yes. And then after these, first do I just have some samples or pictures of the type of what kind of bathroom we're talking about that would need to be at the site? Based on our employee workforce that's there, we would need to provide three separate laboratories for that, or if we have management, we just want to at least DXS two on the way to site and one stall on the urinal on that site. So that's the basic standard we have. Next item I have here is regarding Con OSHA, and that's the Connecticut branch of OSHA activities. The way OSHA works universally is federal OSHA typically combines their activities to private businesses or enterprises. So if there was ever an issue with travelers or ETC, federal OSHA would be called to deal with it. The Con OSHA at the state level is really a resource group for the benefit of municipalities and local governments. And they offer consulting resources to make sure that, you know, they're primarily looking at workplace hazards like electrical, trying to think of some of the other things that are there, the PBRs, the restoration, clean air issues, things like that. But they provide a no-cost consulting service to evaluate certain things. So we certainly are willing to consider utilizing this to help us critique our assessment and what we think we might be able to do based on the different sites we're looking at. And certainly having a third-party independent opinion about what we're doing and what we're looking at, you know, would demonstrate certainly a level of commitment to doing the right thing as well as it's a, these are the right ones to do. It's not just a matter of our opinion versus anybody else's. We're trying to do the right thing. We have responsibilities to the employee, the community, and to the 3,000-plus students we take to score every day on the vehicles. And we have to do right by all of them in this, and you can't exclude one from the other. The next thing we have is two overheads of a crew board for the site at 525 Cedar, Russell Road, this is the Cedar Crest Hospital property. The first aerial view has a red line drawn around the perimeter of both the main buildings in there. That is the safety zone that's laid out by the fire and grease department. Access may need to the facility, kind of moments notice, but from the fire risk holder, grease calls may. That is a parameter we would have to work around for consideration of this particular site. So this was just hand-drawn by members of the public safety groups. So they have access room around the building, that basically has to be protected at all times for their use, and we have to work around it. The second aerial view has red, articulated boxes on it. And these are the areas that were proposed as potential areas of access for the board of education to use for, you know, being able to store our buses up here. With the dimensions I received on the various spaces, the combination of those four areas is a total of 2.25 acres. And if you look at the, four of them are not contiguous to each other, and the largest of the areas really being kind of horn-shaped where it's narrow at the bottom and large on the top. There are only limited setups to these. Looking at that larger area, that looked like it handled about twenty full-size buses in that area, being able to navigate it.
How many?
And we haven't tried to, you know, take this out of the highest level of detail, we're trying to do a more broader brush assessment of what the site will allow us to do. And then we have areas down the hill, the largest square space is significantly down the hill from the large lot, which would probably be best served as area for small buses and for parking. And I think that only has about thirty, thirty-five spaces on it, based on what's there. Not sure what's negotiable on this for space because the state is using it for certain purposes for stateless training, you know, public safety group training, so they need to have their access available as well. And the other lots, the very smaller, is actually just a partial basketball court. It was all stripped off to be like a half-court basketball court. There's no hoop there anymore, but that's what was used at one point. And the other area, which is will be furthest north on Russell Road, north, is a high-shaped piece, significantly overgrown right now, but it seems to be a pretty much a hard surface there, so it'll be workable if it's restored. Little things that we don't think about at this point are tree overhangs. I know when I was just running up today, they look at it again, and the, there are a number of trees that are significantly curved or really shaved back because you can't be able to free, even if the bus can be able to, and we have to be able to maintain the site as well, you can't have this where the buses can't be. So of the two and a quarter acres that's available here, if we feel it's necessary to fence these areas, you would obviously restrict the number of vehicles that you could actually fit because of snow management issues and just navigation and be able to through the space. We look at this as being able to handle, you know, nowhere near what hopefully would be a problem to do about, you know, thirty-five fully bused buses plus fewer fewer employees that are here. So if this proposal with this configuration is what is allowable by the state, and we'll work through the public safety locations with the safety pathways that are staked out, we still need to maintain the high school along with this as a active site because this does not have the capacity to bring everything in. And then the remaining few pages are right of pictures, Camatch was in Washington there two weeks ago, to just give you an idea of the site, what's here. So secluded, the hospital is not active on the other end, so the local services building is only has occasional activity by the state. So reasonably desolate, that's at the end of Russell Road. So then the question becomes with the various choices we have, where do we want to go with this? There are, you know, every site will have positives and negatives, it's a matter of optimizing what is the best possible situation for the board to be in. This particular site, you know, from a different point of action, location recommendations about it, has significant peaks, does not have any water service allocation for an office. So you're definitely in for widening that for the site. You have to reestablish electrical hubs for power to run the lights and heating systems over there. We would need to provide some space for storage of our own needs, but we have to be able to put three, four snow blowers up there and battery jumping systems, things like that to be able to get buses running, you know, as unable to help you just to hold. So a lot of, what we need to do now is, you know, if everybody is ready to kind of move the discussion over to dollars and cents about different things, we can start a common number of tangible basis of all what is at stake. Mrs. Stan?
I don't know if my question belongs now, we're in a couple of minutes, but when you reestablish power, what does that mean? Is it just telling the power company that we are going to use the space or does it mean new power lines?
It would be a new power line. Right now, I'm not sure how the building was hooked up, I imagine it was underground service, the previous issue with the building, but we have no access to being able to use the power in the building. We would have to bring in our own new service from every source, from power pole on the street, and probably put up several of our own power poles just to string it along to get to wherever the designated location of that is. It's not cheap, it's not millions of dollars, it's probably $25,000 to $40,000 to do that, to set it up with a couple of power poles and all the electrical work needed, who said we should transform her and set up the interconnections. Mrs. Chris?
Again, this may not be the time to ask. So I heard you say, should we talk about the cost associated with this? But I'm not hearing that any of the places you've discussed are even a viable solution. And my understanding, so I heard the one, and I apologize, I'm in summer mode and I don't have to be back to work till tomorrow, so I heard the place up off of Russell Road, and clearly it doesn't seem like it's the safest situation. And then I heard-
I would just not want to mention any other particular locations which-
I thought he had mentioned-
He mentioned a potential area, but I wouldn't want to talk about anything specific as it could result in executive session later on here negotiating with the property owner. So the one that we can talk about, since it's public, it's a state property, it's the Cedar Crest, old Cedar Crest Hospital on Russell Road. That's all we're discussing right now. That is, that was the subject of the August ninth special update from Mrs. Morocco with the administration's recommendation to us that it's not a viable site, which memo did not talk about the dollars insensitive because the concerns over the logistics, the security and safety of our employees outweighed.
So I guess my question is, if it's not a viable solution, then why would we discuss the cost?
Well, some of the costs will be generic to whatever property is considered. So if you have a parcel of land that does not have a building on it that can function as an office or a bathroom, you're going to have a certain cost number that goes with it, and that will be no matter what site you look at. So that's really how I have to frame the cost.
And the importance comes from the town council received a draft lease from the state for the Cedar Crest property in the last couple of days. The state is not asking for any money for rent, so you wouldn't be paying for the use of the property just for everything else that goes along with it. So it is important to talk about everything else that goes along with it because there will certainly be people who say, if we wound up paying a monthly lease to a private property owner, would say, how could you possibly be doing that if you were going to get something for zero? So everything in Miss Morocco's memo to us is one half of the reason would be why, and the other half could potentially be what are the costs associated with it? Where is that money coming from? What is the stomach from the town and the board to pay money for a temporary parking solution? Mr. Sylvia?
No, thank you. I'm presuming based upon the comparison criteria that you've explained thus far, that we do have some suggestions to offer or discuss in executive session? I don't know. I understand the zero-cost offer that came from the Cedar Crest, and I can understand why the town is saying, hey, jump on it. But I'm also in full agreement of the, all the other types of parameters that have been outlined, and I thank you again. So I do understand the logic behind Cedar Crest having a overall negative impact, from my opinion and assessment of what I've been able to look at. But I'm just trying to understand, have we identified any alternative sites or have anything that we can't discuss publicly, but I mean, but have we got any that?
There are two sites that are of some interest right now that-
Okay.
My hope is that in the next, before our next regularly scheduled meeting, we would potentially be scheduling another quick turnaround meeting to discuss in executive session a little more fully. At this point, there's nothing really worth discussing. Mrs. Stan?
Given that, I just want to say, once I got the memo, I actually drove off there myself because I was not aware where that was and I wanted to know. And it was very sketchy, it's very not safe, even the road getting there was blocked on the right, going north, it's blocked in two areas, you can't even get around, get to over around, you can't even get there cleanly. And the access to the highway or to Cedar Street would be very, it would be a huge issue in the morning, getting those buses out of that area. And I didn't feel it was safe, even if you put lighting, if you put fences, very desolate, very isolated, and very broken up and down.
Mr. Chufel? Are any of these buildings presently being occupied?
No.
Mr. Sylvia?
I do agree with Ms. Stan, but I do want to go on the record as saying thank you to the state. I can understand why they're offering it for free, given all of the ancillary costs that will need to be applied. And I, you know, so I'm grateful to the state, but there are a lot of state properties that are empty. There's one on the Berlin Turnpike, right next to Price Chopper and Dick's, and it's a nice enclosed building. And I'm sure the state would be happy to lease it to us if that's some of the parameters that this town is looking at. So, and I understand that we have some other options to have discussed, but if we're looking for the state to help us out a little bit, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of state facilities that are available for consideration.
Mr. Jack Watson, if you could give a brief kind of rundown of what these ancillary costs look like from your perspective and some of the ones that are going to carry over to any property, because they are, they are more than potentially what we may think they are. And although we did set aside money at the end of last year through deferring maintenance projects, that money is still available to help out in the towns and the building committees' time of need, it is not the amount that's going to be necessary for any solution.
Okay. First item of cost will be for the rental of office trailer and bathrooms. Should look at $150,000 over a two-year lease for that.
For both?
For both. Right. Could run $45,000 to $55,000 for one bathroom, depending on the type of trailer that we need to get for office purposes. That would be low side $12,000 to $1,000. And then you have to worry about the interconnection of those, you know, actually prepping the site where you can't put the, like, on-site building at the level where you have to work with the vendors, you have to make sure the property handler is okay with where it goes, and that it will dovetail properly with other utility connections. You will, depending on what the circumstances are for access to power, if you have to run a separate transformer and your own service through the area, that could be $25,000 to $40,000 depending on the proximity of what you need to do and how far away from the established first source power lines there are. You need to figure $10,000 to establish your home service and any extra extensions and whatever wifi you need to do on top of that. That'll include your ongoing costs during the two-year time period for having home service at that location. When you get to the site conditions as far as what you determine is important, site lighting would be one of those. Now, if you need site lighting, you need the light poles for it. So depending on how many light poles you need, you're talking 15,000 hours a pole for the finished product, and that's tying it into the, whatever service that you establish in the location. We have to design how that goes and worry about the lights as many as we can, you know, probably have to be all overhead service, help with poles, probably to not be able to dig in and go underground because of other conditions.
be able to dig in and go underground because of other conditions. Yeah, I'll stop right now. Reassess your question.
Mr. Stan?
Can you talk about that designing of where those things go in? Who does that work?
It would all depend on how we lay out the site. You know, we designed that we're going to have a big double cover leaf for how the buses would go, where the power poles need to be in relation to the activity that we just-
But I'm asking, who, who does that design with you?
We have an electrical engineer for that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That answered.
Besides lighting, if we need or fill the security cameras needed or warranted for whatever you feel are concerns or risks in different areas. A security camera is probably about $3,000, if, depending on how many you need to cover your space. You would have either have a set of wireless arrangement where you have to run them off the power poles as well and go back to your centralized service.
Mr. Stan?
Is that $3,000 each?
Each. Okay. So if you needed four cameras to cover the site, that would be $12,000. Same bed of consideration with fencing for an area. How many linear feet, how many gates do you need? We feel we would need an electronic power gate because we would not have people with staff there all the time. You know, so if you just left the gates open, the last person coming in to lock the door behind them, and the last person come in at 11:30 at night, everybody else left at 5:00, you have free and unfettered access to the space for six hours. So that would need to be a combination of, you know, a power gate going in, power gate going out. If you have multiple areas on the site, you have to try to conform to a fencing arrangement. You could have multiple situations of this. I know we, right now at the high school, the fencing system we have there costs $6,000 per year rental, and that's two sets of hand-operated gates and 300 linear feet of fencing, something like that.
Mrs. Stroes on the phone.
What did we have in Garfield Street that was topical?
We don't have any Garfield Street. Right now, the police department-
I mean, come on.
Big brother's always watching.
I just, you know, I, I want to make an informed decision when we do this, and I want to stay true to what the town hall renovation community needs. And I just want to make sure that the costs are things, you know, that the town people aren't going to come back saying, we don't have that now, why are we asking for it?
Correct.
I mean, having this part there is legit, but.
Mr. Stan?
Can you explain the need for the electronic gate again?
Okay. So if, depending on the bus driver's schedule, the last regular person goes home at 5 o'clock, and there's one athletic trip out going to Westport or swimming or wherever it is, they won't be back till 11:30, 12 o'clock tonight. So if you have a gate that somebody locks at 5 o'clock, the bus driver, every bus driver would need to have their own set of keys and access to get there, even a keypad or even some other sophisticated way of being able to go on demand and open the gate to be able to do that. And is that what we want to have happening where we have people being required with that odd hours to be responsible for opening up, locking gates all by themselves in, you know, locations? So, or you leave them wide open and anybody can come and anybody can go. So, you know, it's all the level of protection that the board feels is necessary for open poison property.
Mr. Stroes on the phone?
I was going to add that much of this is going to be site-specific, and so maybe if we could understand what those would be, such as the security gate for locking, that was one that we felt would must if we were to use 525 Russell Street, Russell Road. It may not in other sites. So I would defer to the board chair that as he works with the council, we could then begin looking at each of those properties and developing that list for your review once we know exactly what we're looking for. Because again, it is all site-specific. We can give you generalizations, but not every site may need that power locking gate. So it will depend on where we are. So just so you know in advance that it's not a general plan, but it's really a site-specific plan.
Mr. Sylvia?
I respect giving you your bus driver for what you're suggesting. It's a worst-case scenario, but I, I know when I returned home late at night, I called the police department to open up my door and make sure there was nobody there and there would be a shooting. So I mean, in your scenario, if there's an 11, if there's a site that needs to have a lock, gate locked, it's locked at 5:30, and then the 11:30 driver that comes back calls in over to the police department and they can open it up. So I mean, you don't have to go through the worst-case scenario. So, but I do agree with Ms. Morocco with yours, it's site-specific, and I'm fully in agreement allowing the chair to work with the town on those situations.
All right. Next little walk after fencing and gating things is if that was determined to be not really suitable or practical, is you hire a security service to, you know, watch everything while we're not there. So if you have it where they expire at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, and then until, you know, 6:00 AM the next morning of coverage, you have a $200,000 a year expense for running that type of security protection system for yourself. And at that point, you don't really worry about the gates and security cameras because you're relying on people proving it.
Mr. Sylvia?
I come back to Ms. Rosso's early comment. Do we have it today? No.
We do have, we have a 24-hour-
We have a 24-hour study.
We do.
So we're next door to the police department.
Okay. I rest my case. Do you need to justify why you need a 24-hour security service?
It's whatever risk you feel are inherent in that particular parcel.
I agree. So it's back to what Ms. Morocco mentioned, which is-
It's entirely site-specific. If we're looking at moving our buses to Garfield Street right now, we would say we don't need any security at all because the police is controlling it 24 hours.
Correct.
So, you know, that's, that's kind of how that goes. So that's, does that kind of wrap up the high level?
Yeah.
Kind of all the, everything that's going on into these. So, you know, it can, it can get expensive depending on the site. Many of those costs carry over from site to site for, for anything that we've looked at. So, Mr. Brandon, you have something?
Really quick, just about maintaining the site. So how would that work? Like right now, who maintains the Garfield Street pair? Is that the town or are we doing that, do the board that?
What you're talking about, you're talking about fixing the road or fixing the parking lots or-
And so when you talked about like the plowing and the mowing, like we would have to, so if it was a private place, then we would have to rely on them to do it, right? Well, and then-
It would, again, it would depend like if the state, if they have certain union contracts for servicing the property, whether it's still plowing, cutting the lawn, we would be holding whoever those parameters are, you know, where we are on the list of technical areas, or if it's not first. You know, we had our town forces be able to, you know, add that into their coverage as far as doing the fencing would be helpful. But again, without getting into the weeds and what the negotiations are and what we, what an owner's going to expect from us as far as caring for the property, where he's the one doing, I'm the one doing. I can't answer that universally.
Mr. Chufel?
We already have a security card clearance for all the doors for most of it. So that would take care of that for a gate, electronic gate or motorized gate.
It's, it's the cost of the gate though. That is expensive, probably those, those types of gates. Okay. I don't, I don't want to belabor this anymore than, than we need to. Those are, those are all the considerations that are coming up over the last month or two as we've been looking for sites. I will again say there, there are multiple sites that are still currently being investigated. It's not the recommendation from the administration, and I don't think from any board members that I've talked to that we utilize the site at Cedar Crest, although it remains an option in a dire circumstance, I suppose. But I, I don't think that the safety and security of our vehicles and our staff outweighs anything else. I meant to reverse that, but nothing outweighs the safety and security of our vehicles and staff. That's what I meant to say.
Staff.
Staff and vehicles. I think everyone understands the point. It's, it's my hope that there will be some movement soon that allows for the board to discuss specific sites and whether or not anything works better. There is, there are tight deadlines coming up with the bids going out or having been out for the project, with Transition Academy moving out of the town hall for the end of September, early October, based on the trailer and when that gets set up. And for demolition, that needs to get done and staging, things need to move in for the project not to be held up. So we're very cognizant of that. We have been doing our due diligence at every, every turn, but the safety and security of our staff and our vehicles is our primary concern and, and then the logistics of, of actually moving. So I, I hope that we will be able to do some of them quickly and soon, definitely.
What will happen on Wednesday, the 29th? Where will the buses sit?
Everything is as it is right now and how it was last year until there's a place to move the buses. Anything further on this? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to public participation on any matter related to our board responsibilities. Our phones are open, 860-665-8736. Come on, if you just press the button in the front of the microphone and then-
I've never needed a microphone.
And just state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Pamela Gay Madrazo. I live at 31 Steeple Chase Drive in Newington. I came here tonight expecting to talk about a different subject, but tonight I just want to say thank you for approving Pamela's appointment. I work upstairs in student services and I have no doubt that this coming year will be crazy, hectic. It always is, we're busy, but there's nothing that comes our way that Pamela can't handle. And I will sleep very well tonight knowing that she's in charge, and I appreciate everybody approving that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madrazo. Any further public comment? Seeing no one on the phones, does any board have any comment? I would, I would allow, you know, it's not on the agenda. Mr. Sylvia?
Josh, I just want to let you know, you've got my support, whatever hammer you need to use on the town council to get the type of site we need for our buses. You know, I, I can admit that I have been approached on multiple fronts, but I know that you've got what we need. You have our best interest in, at heart, and I'll support anything that you believe is appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Any other board comment? Okay. Seeing none, I would just remind everyone that convocation, it's Monday morning, the real true work of the school system starts again, will never stop, but it's, it starts again for all of our other staff returning from summer vacation, Monday morning. So if anyone's able to be there, it is always a nice event. I would call for a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Stroes and seconded by Mrs. Guyan. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned at 8:26. Thank you.